Okay, well, I guess I don't have to introduce myself because most of you know who I am by now. But I am Doreen Frost and I am town clerk. And so I wanted to welcome everybody tonight. It's nice to have a full house. Happy to see you all here. Thank you for coming. And thank you to the Historical Society for providing a dinner for us. So, in the name of the state of Maine, you're hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Sangerville and the county of Piscataquis and the state of Maine qualified to vote in town affairs to assemble at the Sangerville Fire Station on Thursday, February 21st, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the evening, then and there to act on the following articles to wit. Article one, to choose a moderator to preside at said meeting. Do I have any nominations, please?
Nominate.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second. Are there any other nominations? Okay, nomination cease. And I need at least three ballots cast, please. And I'll show you the little ballot box is empty. And it's covered on it. And you can see one of the ladies here get slipped away. Anyone else? Okay. Okay, so we're all set with those ballots. And we have three ballot counters who volunteered this evening after twisting their arms. And so we're going to dump these out. And have them come together. Oh, and we have nominated Paul Davis. Thank you very much.
Okay, folks, good evening. We don't have a microphone tonight. Everybody's gonna be real quiet. Don't be hollering so loud. I believe now we're gonna have a new vacation. Pastor A, that's what's on the warrant.
Pastor David Ray, Pastor Grace Bible Church in Sangerville. I enjoyed a meal with many of you this evening. It was well put together, I thought, and it was pretty yummy. But I'm kind of privileged to be able to open up your meeting with a word of prayer. So shall we bow our heads? Dear only Father, we have gathered here this evening to conduct the business of this town. As we begin, we want to ask for your wisdom and guidance here tonight. We ask that you withdraw in here and provide us with your guidance as we make plans for the year ahead. Help us resolve issues. Help us to find common ground. Help us to work together for the betterment of this town and our lives. We thank you for your word that tells us that wisdom from above is pure, peaceable, gentle, reasonable, full of mercy and good fruits, unwavering, and without hypocrisy. Grant that we may have this wisdom and your peace as we move forward with the business at hand. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thanks. We all stand and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Interesting, when you say that, I knew a lot of lawyers didn't like to look at the bat, but they didn't care much for justice. Okay, Article two, to adopt the Maine Moderator's Manual published by the Maine Municipal Authority as an authority on rules and procedures for conducting the annual town meeting. We need a motion? We have a motion, we have a second? Discussion? Seeing none? If you favor the art promotion, please raise your blue slips. If you oppose, raise your blue slips. It's a vote. Article three, to ascertain if non-resident speakers are present and whether or not inhabitants wish to call upon them to be heard. I know our state representative is here tonight, and he told me he wanted to be heard. So if somebody wants to make this motion, it will be heard. Motion to pass the article, we have a second? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your blue slips. All those opposed? Representative Sterns?
Thank you, Senator Davis. For those that don't know, I think I know both of you. For these of all sterns, I'm just a state representative. I live over in Guilford. My contact information should be in the town report. If it is, you can readily get it online, or I left some cards over there on the table. All I would say is that the legislature currently has 2,200 bills, plus or minus. Some of them are waiting matters. And if my claim is anywhere near after it, you are a great peril until we adjourn. I really appreciate this is the greatest form of government for the people of Iowa, for the people of county, where it's at. And thank you all for taking part.
Thank you, Representative Sterns. Okay, we'll move to Article four. To elect one select man, assessor, and overseer of the four for a three-year term and fix the compensation. We have a nomination, Dale Gray. Is he seconded? Any other nominations? Anyone else? I entertain a motion for nomination to cease, Senator. We have a second? Discussion? All those in favor of nomination cease. We have a nomination, Dale Gray. Bring him down to the floor. Please.
What's that? Yeah, we're gonna vote. Yeah, vote.
You got it all cleaned up and everything. You come to this meeting.
You look good.
Not bad. No snow yet.
Okay, let's try. There's a pizza I lost.
Has everyone voted that we should vote? If so, then I'll vote the ballot. Then I'll just vote your ballot. We have 11 votes, and they're all for Dale Gray. Gray, would you like to stand up and show a photo of what you look like? Now we need to stack the selectmen stipend and the article costs $800 a year. We have a second? Discussion? Anybody? Hearing none, if you favor Chummy's motion at $800 a year, raise your blue slips. If you're opposing, raise it. It's a vote. Next, to elect two school board, two school committee members for a three-year term. I entertain nominations. Who wants to serve on the school board? What do they do on the school board? You go to a meeting once a month, minimum. If you become chair, you go to a meeting every three days. I know. And you review the budget, you review the curriculum, you do all the things that needs to be done, run through. And we need two people. The two people here, anybody wants to? Anybody want to serve? The selectmen can appoint if nobody wants to serve. Get her to nominate. Rebecca Packard, is she seconded? We have nomination Rebecca Packard. We have any other nominations? We need two. Well, we have Rebecca Packard. Bring in your ballots, Rebecca Packard. Rebecca Packard, we need some ballots.
In case we can get those fire trucks shut off so we can hear back here.
It's a fire truck.
Oh, it's a fire truck.
I don't know if it's a, it's kind of cheap. Kind of his calling.
We risk freeze up in New York.
You want the job, Paul, you could be trouble. I got all the jobs, I need... Joe?
Yeah, no, I don't want that.
Has everyone voted that we should vote? We have three votes for Rebecca Packard. Would you care to stand up?
Congratulations, Professor.
We need one more. Who wants to serve on the school board? Well, now, jump at once now. You know, it's a notable column, folks. A school needs good people, and we need good people to serve on it.
I just want to say, to give the interest up everybody, the meetings do pay $25,000.
I'm nominated, Tom Gromit.
Do we have a second? We have a second? Did a lot of you decline in down? Well, I guess we'll have to leave it empty then. You folks have to appoint somebody. Okay, we'll move on to the sanitary district trustee for a three-year term. We have a nomination for that?
Nominate Rick Pellerin.
We have a nomination, Rick Pellerin. We have a second? Any other nominations? Any? I would entertain a motion for nomination cease. Anybody wants to make it? We have a second? Discussion? Hearing seeing none, all those in favor of nomination cease. Raise your cards. Bring in your ballot for Rick Pellerin or whoever you might want to write on the ballot. Please.
Want to get an exercise in life?
Yeah.
In line execution.
Leave early, soon to go home and have ice cream, huh? Everyone voted that we should?
I'm sorry, Paul, I was looking for that on the board. I can't, I can't see the plan. What article is that under?
It's omitted.
It was posted, I forgot to put it on the town report, but it is on, when it was posted around town, it is on there.
It's part of Article four.
Yep.
It's on Article four.
We had amended pages over there.
We got it here. It's on Article four, you're right. Anyone else wish to vote? Seeing nobody? Count the ballots, please. Three votes for Rick Pellerin. Is he here tonight? There you are. Article five, to see if the town will set a date when taxes on real estate and personal property shall be due and payable, and set a rate of interest to be charged on taxes unpaid after such date. The recommended due date is August 31st, 2019, and the maximum allowed is 9% per Title 36 MRSA 505-4-A. Do we have a motion? We have a second? Discussion? Sir? Okay. Any discussion? Anybody? Yes.
What was the percentage last year?
Eight.
Eight percent last year.
And is there a reason for increasing it to nine, to the maximum?
It was the maximum last year.
Okay, so we always go?
We were consistent, correct.
Yes.
I don't, I don't think historically that we always went with the maximum, but I probably wouldn't have lasted long.
I don't know. We have a motion on the floor to pass the article as I read it. It's been seconded. Is there any more discussion? Hearing seeing none, if you favor the article as I read it, please raise your blue slips. If you're opposed, raise your blue slips. Article six, the CFC Town will authorize prepayment of real estate and personal property tax and pay no interest thereon. And that is found in MRSA 36506. Do we have a motion? We have a motion to pass. We have a second? We have a second? Discussion? Anybody? Floor is yours. Okay. If you favor the article, Article six, as I read it, please raise your blue slips. If you're opposed, raise your blue slips. It's a vote. Article seven, to see if the town, in accordance with 36 MRSA Section 506-A, will vote that a taxpayer who pays an amount in excess of that finally assessed, of that finally assessed on April 1st, 2019, shall be repaid the amount of overpayment plus interest from the date of the overpayment at the annual rate of 5%. Do we have a motion?
Motion to pass the article.
We have a motion to pass the article as I read. We have a second? We have a second? Discussion? Anybody?
Yeah, how much can I overpay? That's too different.
It's referencing when you abate taxes, so you have to pay all of your taxes and then qualify for an abatement. You would get interest only on the abated portion.
You had a luck jump. Any other discussion? Hearing none? Seeing none? If you favor the article as I read it, please raise your blue slips. If you're opposed, raise your blue slips. It's a vote. Article eight, to see if the town will allow a discount of 2% on taxes paid in full before 5:00 PM on July 31st, 2019, and vote to allow for payments received on taxes to be applied to the taxpayer's oldest outstanding tax bill. Do we have a motion? We have a second? We have a second? Discussion? Yes.
What day of the week is that?
It's a Wednesday. We can be open on that day.
The town manager says we'll be open on that day. Just for Utah. Any other discussion? Hearing seeing none, if you favor the article as I read it, please raise your blue slips. If you're opposed, raise your blue slips. It's a vote. Article nine, to see if the town will authorize the selectmen on behalf of the town to sell cemetery lots. Those revenues shall be put into the perpetual care trust fund account. Do we have a motion? We have a motion to pass the article. We have a second? We have a second? Discussion? Hearing no discussion on the cemetery? If you favor the article as I read it, please raise your slips. If you're opposed, raise your slips. It's a vote. Article 10, to see if this town will authorize the selectmen on behalf of the town to sell and dispose of real estate and personal property acquired by the town for non-payment of taxes thereon. The revenue received from the tax-acquired property shall be used to pay the back taxes, and any additional revenue shall be put in the general fund on such terms as they deem advisable, and to execute quitclaim deeds for such property. Do we have a motion? We have a second? We have a second? Discussion? Do you have discussion, sir? Stand right up and tell us. Oh, you seconded it. Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, if you favor the article as I read it, please raise your blue slips. If you're opposed, raise your blue slips. It's a vote. Article 11, to see if the town will authorize municipal offices to spend only those funds necessary for the operation of the town of Sangerville during the period from January 1st, 2020, to the 2020 annual town meeting. Do we have a motion? We have a second? We have a second? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your blue slips. If you're opposed, raise your blue slips. It's a vote. Excuse me. Article 12, to see if the town will authorize the selectmen to accept or to refuse any donations or gifts on behalf of the town. Do we have a motion? We have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none? If you favor the article, please raise your blue slips. If you're opposed, raise your blue slips. It's a vote. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to apply for and accept grants from private, state, and federal agencies that do not require matching funds from the town or impose contractual obligations from the town. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second? Discussion? Anybody? Hearing none, if you favor the article as I read it, please raise your blue slips. If you're opposed, raise your blue slips. It's a vote. Article 14, to see if the town will allow the municipal offices to accept revenue generated from certain fines and fees related to dog licenses and the dog, town's dog audiments, and expend such in the administration of dog control. Do we have a motion? We have a second? Discussion? No discussion. Everybody likes dogs. If you favor the article as I read it, please raise your blue slips. If you're opposed, raise your blue slips. It's a vote. Article 15, to see if the town will allow the municipal offices to accept revenue generated from plumbing permits and to expend these funds to the licensed plumbing inspector as compensation. We have a, we have a motion to accept the article. Do we have a second? We have a second? Discussion? Hearing seeing none, if you favor Article 15 as I read it, please raise your slips. If you're opposed, raise your, it's a vote. Article 16, shall the town vote to give the monies in the amount of $688.48 raised from the state snowmobile registrations received in 2019 to the Four-Wing Snowmobile flock?
Is that a misprint on the 2019?
No. We receive it in January, and it's for the 2018, but we receive it in January of 19.
We have a motion on the article? Have a motion to pass the article? We have a second? We have a second? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your blue slips. If you're opposed, raise your, it's a vote. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to allow municipal offices to expend revenue from the overlay as necessary to accounts for fractional differences in computing the tax rate, abatements, and if any, and the 2% discount for taxes paid in full before 5:00 PM July 31st, 2019. Do we have a motion? We have a motion. We have a second? We have a second? Discussion? Anybody? Hearing none, if you favor the article, please raise your blue slips. If you're opposed, raise your slips. It's a vote. I hope you can hear me at that, and talk as loud as I can. Okay, good. Article 18, to see what sum of money the town of Sangerville will vote to fund approved articles, 19 through 34 inclusive. In our rate of excise, $248,000. Main revenue sharing, $83,000. Local road assistance program, $33,000. Dedicated revenue for animal control, $2,700. Undesignated contingency account, $70,000. Other revenue, $76,050. And home state exemption estimated, $83,187. For a total of $595,937 to remain to be raised through property taxes. And is recommended by the Board of Selectmen and Budget Committee, a yes, folks. Do we have a motion? We have a second? Discussion? Anybody?
Could you tell me how the main revenue sharing is spent?
We don't itemize specifically how it is spent. It goes into our total revenues of the year with everything, and it, just whatever our expenses, it offsets our expenses.
Okay, so that, that is not specifically designated to lower taxes for the people in Sangerville?
Not specifically. It's, well, all of the revenues together help to offset taxes.
And could you tell me what the undesigned and contingency amount is? What is that?
The contingency amount, there's a warrant article in here later that's $10,000 for the contingency in the auditor. We had it last year. They recommend that we put it in as a revenue as well as the expense, and the Budget Committee and the Select Board decided to take $60,000 additional from the undesigned.
What is the other revenue? Do you have that under any particular?
It's like photocopies and agent fees for motor vehicle or snowmobile, because we get agent fees for everything that we do in the office, and copies, just miscellaneous income that we get that's not specifically designated by these other items.
The governor's budget calls for a raise of that a half a percent for revenue sharing, going from 2% to 2.5%.
That's good.
That's what she's calling. Any other discussion? Hearing seeing none, if you favor Article 18 as I read it, please raise your blue slips. If you're opposed, raise your slips. Vote. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select- to authorize the selectmen to use up to $10,000 of undesigned revenue in the event of overdrafts, unforeseen events, or emergencies. Any use of this contingency arrangement must be voted on at a select board meeting, and the expenditures will be listed in the subsequent town report. Transfer of undesigned revenues in excess of $10,000 must be authorized by a vote of a special town meeting. And then it says, $3,000 was used to settle an open workers' comp claim approved by the Board of Selectmen's meeting on July 5th, 2018. $2,447.33 was overdraft from the 2018 prior department budget, approved at a, at the Board of Selectmen's meeting on January 2nd and 23rd, 2019, to be covered by the 2018 contingency. We have a motion? Somebody make a motion? We have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second discussion. Anybody? Anyone? If you favor the article as I read it, please raise your slips. If you oppose it, raise your slips to vote. Article twenty, excuse me, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for general government not to exceed $271,531. Do we have a motion? Can't pass the article without a motion. We have a motion. We have a second? We have a second discussion? Anybody wish to discuss this? Hearing, no requests? If you favor the article as I read it, please raise your blue slips. If you oppose it, raise your slips to vote. Article twenty-one, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the fire department, not to exceed $54,000. And the Board of Selectmen recommend $54,000. Do we have a mo, we have a motion? We have a second? We have a second discussion? Anybody? Hearing, seeing none? If you favor the article as I read it, please raise your blue slips. If you oppose it, raise your slips. And I think our fire chief is here. Would you just stand up and show us who you are? Right there. Thank you. Thank you. He's also been able, just down the road. I've been there longer than he has, though. Article twenty-three, let's see, where are we? Article twenty-two? Article twenty-two, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for animal welfare, not to exceed $2,700, and that's what's recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee. We have a motion? We have a motion? We have a second? Discussion? Anybody? Yes.
Do we vote on that in Article eighteen?
Do we vote on that in Article eighteen?
No, this is the expending part of it. Article eighteen is, when we collect late fees, we can't spend it on anything except animal control, so it goes into the general fund, but the only thing we can use it for is animal control. So it's like we're re-appropriating the same money that was brought in last year to spend. Does that make sense?
One's revenue, one's expense.
Right, one's revenue, one's expense.
Any other discussion? Hearing, seeing none? If you favor the article as I read it, please raise your blue slips. If you oppose it, raise your slips to vote. Article twenty-three, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for protection, including streetlights and hydrants, not to exceed $47,500, which the amount is, which amount is recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee. Do we have a motion? We have a motion to accept the article as I read it? We have a second discussion? Anybody?
It would only be a little near, huh?
Barely not. If there is no discussion, then please raise your slips if you approve the article. If you oppose it, raise your slips to vote. Article twenty-four, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the library, not to exceed $19,600. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second discussion? We got a nice little library over here, folks. You wanna spend a little time there? It's real nice for the library.
I think the library had a little money given to them.
I don't know.
They did. Yeah, it's not official yet, but it's, it's $100,000.
$100,000 somebody gave to the library? Wow. That's wonderful. That's wonderful. Good. If you favor, if there isn't any discussion, if you favor the article as I read it, please raise your slip. That's wonderful. We gonna do it. No, no.
Perpetual care.
Spend it, huh? Article twenty-five, to see what sum of money the vote, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for public works, not to exceed $414,195. And that's the amount recommended by the budget committee and the Board of Selectmen. Do we have a motion? We have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second discussion? Anybody? Hearing, seeing no requests for discussion? Favor the article, please raise your blue slips. If you oppose it, raise it to vote. Article twenty-six, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for health and sanitation, not to exceed $106,600, which again is the amount that the Board of Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend. Do we have a motion? We have a second? We have a second discussion? Anybody? Hearing, none? If you favor the article, please raise your blue slips. If you oppose it, raise your blue slips to vote. Article twenty-seven, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for monument lot, not to exceed $1,300. And that's the amount recommended by the selectmen, and it says here, "This includes the additional moan of the town-owned lots, town hall, monument, town garage, Conrady Hill, and Main Street, and by the welcome, Sangerville sign on Route 23, for $1,200." Do we have a motion? We have a motion? We have a second? We have a second discussion? Anybody? Seeing, no requests? If you favor the article, Article twenty-seven, raise your hands. It's a vote. Article twenty-eight, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for municipal welfare, not to exceed $5,000. And that's the amount recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee. Do we have a motion? We have a motion? We have a second? We have a second discussion? Anybody? Yes, sir.
What's municipal welfare?
What is municipal welfare?
General assistance. When people don't have enough money to pay their bills that they need to live, they can come and ask for assistance.
Anybody else? If you favor the article as I read it, with a figure of $5,000, please raise your hands. If you oppose it, raise your hands to vote. Article twenty-nine, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for parks and recreations, not to exceed $9,000, which is a recommendation of the Board of Selectmen. Do we have a motion? We do. We have a second? We have a second discussion? Anybody? I would presume that includes the park down there where the gazebo is. Well, we had a great time at Christmas this year down there. Fire department. We had a great Santa Claus. And they had a whole bunch of kids come in, and it was fun. Rec team as well. It was good. If you favor Article twenty-nine as I read it, please raise your blue slips. If you oppose it, raise it to vote. Article thirty, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for cemeteries, not to exceed $14,400. And that is the amount that's recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee. Do we have a motion? We have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second discussion? Anybody? Hearing, seeing none? All those in favor, please raise your blue slips. If you oppose it, raise it to vote. Article thirty-one, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for social services, not to exceed $300. And that is the amount that is requested by the selectmen and the budget committee. Do we have a vote? Do we have a motion? We have a motion? Do we have a second? Discussion? Tom?
Which agencies are getting this money?
No agencies. It's for the town to do like a Christmas party or something for the kids, and I don't remember what the second one was. It's in the...
Well, did we get requests from?
We did. Yep.
Designating any of that money to our getting?
No.
Any other discussion? Hearing, seeing none? If you favor the article as I read it, please raise your blue slips. If you oppose it, raise your slips to vote. Article thirty-two, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for historical society, not to exceed $800, which is the amount that the Board of Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Somebody want to second it? We have a second discussion? Tom?
Really hasn't had anything to do with the money. We need more volunteers to help. We want to join, so we send out to here. We need to use the help.
Anyone else? If you favor Article thirty-two as I read it, with a figure of $800, please raise your... If you oppose it, raise your slips to vote. Article outland, Article thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to allow the municipal offices to accept revenues generated from the sale of forest products from town woodlots and to distribute this revenue upon receipt at a ratio of 20% for the Sangerville Community Forest Reserve to pay the consultant pariser and to implement the forest management plan, and 80% for the town hall renovation reserve. Do we have a motion? We have a second? We have a second discussion? Anybody?
Do you still have money over on the town hall renovation?
Yes. We took like a general obligation bond. We borrowed it from ourselves, and we have to pay back for, I believe, 10 years, and I think we're in year three or four.
Any other discussion?
Do you have any plan of doing any forestry?
I haven't had a discussion with the forestry committee.
So there's no plans right now that you know of?
That I know of, correct.
If you favor the article, any other discussion? Anybody? If you favor the article as I read it, please raise your blue slips. If you oppose it, raise your slips. Article thirty-four, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for capital reserves, including monument lot and office equipment, not to exceed $1,000. And they got it listed here, monument lot, $500, and office equipment, $500. And $1,000 is the figure that the Board of Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend. We have, we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second discussion? Anybody? Nobody wants to discuss it? Raise your blue slips if you favor it. If you oppose it, raise your slips to vote. Article thirty-five, to see if the town will vote to pay the remaining Rosenberg fire truck loan at Camden National Bank to be paid from Abbey Fowler Reserve, $2,575, the Road Improvement Reserve, $2,135, and the remainder from undesigned fund balance. Current balance is approximately $21,000. Monthly payments for the year were total $11,867. That is raised and appropriated through profit tax, leaving approximately a $10,000 balance. Do we have a motion? We have a motion? We have a second discussion? Anybody? Anybody wish to discuss this? Seeing, knowing? If you favor the article as I read it, please raise your blue slips. If you oppose it, raise your slips to vote. Article thirty-six, to see what, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $100,000 from the general fund for the purpose of road improvement. And that is recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Do we have a motion? We have a motion? We have a second? We have a second discussion? Tom?
What kind of project, you're talking paving, ditching, culverts, basically?
Yeah, the next road that, because we're gonna be able to do McFeeters with the regular budget, and we want to start on the east Sangerville line road and start moving, you know, northerly.
Any other discussion? Coming?
Yes, correct.
You gotta finish the, the gray road.
Yes. Yep.
What about Maple Street?
Yeah, do.
What about Maple Street, somebody said? Any other discussion on this article? Hearing, seeing none?
Something on Maple Street?
Not this year.
Not this year, to when?
It's, it's up to the road committee, and it's in the queue. Every time we do one of these, it gets us closer to closing the loop. So.
Any other discussion? Hearing, seeing none? If you favor the article as I read it, please raise your blue slips. If you oppose it, raise your blue slips to vote. Article thirty-seven, to see if the town will vote to authorize the municipal offices to dispose of town-owned property to the value of $5,000 or less under such terms and conditions as they deem advisable. Do we have a motion? We have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second discussion? Anyone? Hearing, seeing no requests for discussion? If you favor Article thirty-seven as I read it, please raise your slips. If you oppose it, raise your slips to vote. Article thirty-eight, excuse me, to see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the 2008 GMC 5500 dump truck with sander, spreader, and plow. It is currently in need of transmission repair work. Do we have a motion? We have a second? Somebody want to second the motion? We have a second discussion? Tom?
Did we get an estimate for the cost of the repair?
I have not. We're not sure 100% what's wrong with it. The road commissioner last fall had someone look at it, The road commissioner last fall had someone look at it and he tried to use it and it won't go in a smooth, um, it won't go basically. And so they, they did look at it and they said there is something in the transmission that is wrong. We didn't want to put money into it if it's just a, something that is gonna continue to be a problem.
Any other discussions? Anyone? If you favor the article as I read it, raise your blue slips. If you oppose it, please just vote. It's a vote. Article 39. Shall the town of Sangerville vote for an act in ordinance entitled Adult Use Marijuana Business Ordinance? A yes vote will authorize the town of Sangerville to opt-in and allow adult-use marijuana establishments to operate in Sangerville, subject to the conditions that the voters subsequently vote to an act in ordinance providing for the rules to regulate and permit such businesses. A no vote will mean adult-use marijuana facilities are not permitted in Sangerville. A public hearing was held on February 6th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. A copy of the proposed ordinance is included in the annual town report and is posted with the 2019 town warrant in the following locations: Town Office, Sangerville Post Office, E. Robinson's, and Country Time Variety Store. Do we have a motion?
We have to give a bell.
Yes. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
We have a second? We have a second. Discussion? If there is no discussion, if you vote yes, it will be permitted. If you vote no, it will not be permitted. As I read this, so bring your, bring your bow, follow. You ready to go vote? You stand there and I'll go vote. Cole?
I am.
How are you today?
Taking it easy, how are you?
Found a new table now.
How was your drive?
Fun.
I use it for harvesting. When, when the forestry committee states it's time to harvest.
I've been at my house.
Haven't harvested up there yet? Yeah, I don't know.
They don't get any good.
Yeah.
I don't know how much acreage.
I'm hoping we can get a forestry committee together and hear us talk about permission.
I don't, I don't think they never do that. Do they ever sell that?
They can, except on where they receive it. They have stipulations in there.
It was connected to my land, so.
Yeah, well, but, but they can't sell it because they, you know, because of where it came from.
How would I find out?
I can't get the deed. But I don't think. You don't have to worry about your neighbors.
Right, right. And I, you know, I'd like to at least know about it if they were. So that I could, you know, have at least an option to buy it maybe, just to make my living.
Has everyone voted that wants to vote? Is there anyone that wants to vote that hasn't? I want everyone every chance to vote. If everyone is voted, everyone who voted voted. I'll ask the question of the county. Now, if you fail, you're not back to run, I guess.
Well, it's, it's an opt-in, so it's, they can do another petition.
On your back.
Yep. There's no limit to how many times you can try.
I think we'll be, I think we'll be the first town in if we go in. I don't think anybody's in the vote.
Oh, no. They can vote.
Well, the opt-ins, we couldn't do it until 19, so I wonder if any other town has opted in yet. Do you think there are towns that have had meetings in opt-ins? Is that right? Well, I didn't think you could opt, oh, well, I don't know when their meeting is, is what I'm saying. You couldn't opt-in until 19, so. We got it. We're about to be old. Would you bet a pizza what it costs?
May I have the results? The vote was 34 no, 22 yes. The motion fails. The no's were 34. The yes was 22. The article fails. With that, we have a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn. We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.